The meeting to order. All board members are present except for Tammy, who we were trying to get remotely, but didn't work out too well. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in our nation under the central government.
The... Approve our agenda for today. Do we have any additions or changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have our consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Any comments? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Committee reports. Policy.
The November meeting, we reviewed several policies that had to do with transportation, and we received input from Craig Most on those. And so, we just made minor language changes.
And your next meeting is probably after the first of the year?
No, it's in December.
Okay.
September 3rd. Next week. Next Wednesday.
Southwest Metro?
We had actually two meetings. We had the Southwest Metro Board met, but also, for the last and final time, the Minnesota Valley Special Ed Co-op met. And we have vote on dissolution, and it passed. And MRSEC now officially is no longer a special education co-op entity. As far as the Southwest Metro Education Cooperative, it was a very routine meeting. We had a nice presentation about a program that deals with students that have psychological issues of depression or other emotional problems. And the program is basically one that helps these students stay in school, stay focused on their schoolwork, but at the same time, it gives them support for their emotional needs that they're battling. And it's a very good program, and it was a very good presentation by the folks that are running that program. One thing I did want to mention, and that is, there was a distribution of the funds that were left over after MRSEC dissolved. And part of the funds will be held for up to a year with the intention that if there is a need for building onto the facility at Jordan, our MRSEC, what was a MRSEC facility, but now Southwest Metro Ed Co-op facility, if there is a need for that, some of the money that was intended to go to the former members of MRSEC would be used to pay for some of the addition that would be done on that facility. But at this time, we have no decision on that, and that, if it does come into that, then we'll address that issue at that time. Would you have any addition to that, Tammy?
Nope, that explains it good.
Other than that, we will not have a meeting in December. The December meeting was canceled unless there should be something that, by the way of being very important, comes up.
Thank you. CPAC?
There was no CPAC meeting. The next one is scheduled for December. Is that correct?
Correct.
And Community Ed?
Just to reiterate, Ed is the funnier.
Yes, mhm. Not Clyde. It was a toss-up between Clyde and Ed, and Ed won.
The other thing will be that the new book will be coming out in early January. A couple of other things. I went to the play on Sunday, and I urge everybody out in TV land to go and watch it. It's very, very good. And the other thing is that I went to a Veterans Day program at Eagleview, and the kids did a very good job, and it was an excellent presentation, and a lot of veterans did show up. So, I want to thank everybody that participated in all the different ones.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add with, when we talked about the community closet last time, that there was an overwhelming response of donations, and I wanted to thank the community for the support, that they actually have to take a break from it. So, on that behalf of the community closet, I wanted to thank everyone for doing that with the donations. And it does officially open Monday, December 3rd.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Superintendent update?
Okay, our main update, want to inform the board and the public, is with the facility study that we're doing, our task force. We met last Wednesday. That was supposedly going to be our sixth and final meeting, and what we really are basically step three of the decision-making process, and that's really considering options. And it was, the options we're looking at were either to, A, add on to the middle school with the 6'8" building and a swimming pool, and address preschool, increase the preschool programming at the CEC here, along with adding on a bus garage and deferred maintenance items. And the second option was, in part, to the 6'8" middle school being new, finding land and building a brand-new middle school. Lot of discussion, looking at pros and cons of everything. I think we were close to reaching consensus, but we didn't have ready at the meeting what the cost would be to the taxpayers, so the impact on the residents as far as taxes and what it costs. So, through that, and after much discussion, I think we're close to reaching consensus, but we've decided to schedule one more meeting. We'll see where it goes in our next meeting, but that will be on Wednesday, December 5th. So, sorry, Wednesday, December 3rd. I think Sherry threw me off there. I was wondering about that.
No, I apologize.
That's okay.
You were right, you were correct.
So, on Wednesday, December 3rd, we're meeting here at the CEC, and hopefully, we'll continue our discussions and get consensus and have a decision made or a recommendation made for this school board, and we'll go from there. Okay?
I think our goal is to have something to present at the December meeting.
Yep, at the December meeting.
Would that include all facilities, not just the middle school that we've been hearing so much about, but would other facilities also be addressed as well?
Yeah, we'll be talking about that. When it comes to other facilities, too, a lot of it's deferred maintenance items.
Mhm. And the bus garage?
And the bus garage, yep.
Bus garage. I think there's an option to tear down the old 20, or demolish the 23 building, the old building that might be. That's on there, too? Yes.
Yep. Yep. So, hopefully, we'll get everything worked out by that time.
Good news?
Good news, oh, yeah, a lot. First off, just to echo what Don said, we've had some retirements mid-year here. Besides Catherine Havlicek, Don's sister, who has worked in food services, a cook and server, we also had Linda Pica, as a cook and server retiring. Barb Factor, who's put in many years here at New Prague School District. Right now, she's been working at Raven Stream as a paraprofessional in the media center and working for Kids Company. And then Carrie DeValk is one of our language arts teachers from the high school, is retiring at the end of first semester, so near the end of January will be Carrie's last day, along with Lenea Hauptman, you've already accepted her retirement letter, who teaches high school facts, family and consumer science. So, we have two high school teachers that we'll be replacing at the end of first semester. We thank all these people, congratulate them on their retirement, and thank them for all their years of service. Again, like Don was talking about, the musical, I didn't, I'll get to it this weekend. I was out of town, but I've heard nothing but great things about the State Fair Musical. Kids, lot to be proud of. I would encourage people to look up on our website, and besides this weekend being the final weekend of the musical on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday afternoon, we've got a lot of activities, band, choir, athletic teams playing to get out and support our kids.
Actually, the play's just Saturday night and Sunday afternoon.
Was it, I thought it was Friday. Is it Saturday and Sunday? Saturday and Sunday. I know I'm going Sunday, but to get out and support our students in all their activities. Also with that, we'll have at our December meeting, Britt Thompson will be here. She finished third in the diving at the state meet. Very proud of her accomplishments, so she'll be here in December with Brad Skogarbo, our activities director, and we'll recognize Britt at that time. The other thing I want to mention, too, is, just got a letter from the Department of Education, Brenda Casillas, the commissioner, and been informed that New Prague School District is on pace. Again, we've met all our targets in regards to math and reading testing for the MCAs, and are closing the achievement gap, and we'll be having an article on that coming out soon. So, that was a nice accomplishment. There's 31% of the school districts in the state that are meeting the target, so we're one of that percentage. So, that was very good news. I also want to mention, we do, Tony Booth, he has coordinated Soup Talk, me and him are, it's on, you can look on the website, or else Bevcom will have it on Channel 18 every couple of weeks. We have Soup Talk where we have kids and staff members. This past week, well, you can check the website, and we've got teachers on there, and we had one of our students on there. Wyatt Skok was a student who did a fabulous job. He was part of We Day. We had our high school students, and we had our high school ALC, and we had our middle school student council all attend We Day, 18,000 students. And it's about giving back to the community, promoting service learning, learning all that. So, he was, we interviewed him and Tom Wechka, the student council advisor, and it was, it's good, you got to see the, view the video. It's, they do a good job talking about that. And again, with Donson, with Veterans Day, I made it to three of the Veterans Day assemblies, and, I mean, I thank our veterans, of course, from the Legion, that put it on and everything, and we had some great guest speakers, and it was done in first-class manner, and our kids were great. So, lot to be proud of. Guess we have quite a bit of good news, so, lot to be proud of.
Thank you.
At each of these Veterans Day, other veterans came and sat in the corner as part of the audience, and there was a lot of participation at the couple that I went to.
Yep. Yeah, I was amazed how many veterans came back. I think at the high school, we had to have at least 30, maybe 40 veterans, and there's a processional for them coming in and a recessional going out. It was, it was awesome.
And I heard the band, and the choir played a Catholic song, but it was really good, I heard, too.
Yep.
And then they had Abby Shimoda did her speech. She won the essay, part of it, yeah.
Yeah, some really neat stuff.
Okay, moving on to our action items. The World's Best Workforce. Tony, you're going to present that?
Good evening, school board and superintendent Dipperner. I'm here tonight to update you all on the World's Best Workforce, which was brought in from the legislation in the Department of Education last year. It kind of replaces our annual report, but both the annual report and the World's Best Workforce are put together. You can find the World's Best Workforce on our website. What I want to do tonight is to just quickly show you the website and some of the revisions, and then also show you a summary in what it is that we, as a school district, have to do. And then I will be asking for action for you to approve the updates for this school year. The World's Best Workforce, and what you will see on our school district website, which I'll get to here in a second, needs to be updated every single year. It starts with our strategic plan. It starts with our district goals, our building goals, and what it is that we're going to do, our action plan for our students. And Mr. Dipperner already talked about closing the achievement gap, and we work on those all year. We have the goals in the World's Best Workforce. As we set those goals and we put the World's Best Workforce into place, every single fall, it is our responsibility as a school district to update the Department of Education with a summary on how we did for last year. So, I just put up on the screen here what it is that the World's Best Workforce is striving to do. And I'll just reiterate those. These are across Minnesota. These are things that every Minnesota school district needs to work on, and the World's Best Workforce is the driving force behind that. Having all students meet school readiness goals, which would be early childhood, preschool. Having all third-grade students achieve grade-level literacy. Close the academic achievement gap among all racial and ethnic groups of students in between students living in poverty and their more privileged peers. Have all students graduate from high school, and have all students attain college and career preparedness. Those are the things that are cornerstones for our education here in New Prague, not only just because that's what the Department of Education has brought out, but things that we have been striving for, for many, many years. So, as I said earlier, the MDE mandates that we plan new goals and strategies every single year. Myself, Mr. Dipperner, principals, and other certified staff people have worked on what it is that we need to do as far as our revisions. We have goals from all of our buildings, and we have put in place the updates or the things that we want to work on for this school year, the 2014-2015 school year. On the very bottom there, like I said, and I'll show you here in a minute, we also must send in a summary to the Department of Education, and that summary documents student achievement goals that were established last year, 13-14, the strategies and initiatives that we have engaged in to meet the goals and the progress made on those goals. And I did bring this summary tonight just to go through it real quickly. So, I will be asking for the board to approve the updates for us as we go on. I'm just going to very quickly show you where this can be found. The summary can, excuse me, the World's Best Workforce is under the Educational Services, and there is a number of different areas that you can find the information. The very first page is a welcome page. Most of all of you can remember, last year, I went over this quite extensively with you, and since we're, you know, showing the community also. I can scroll down the left-hand column here a little bit to give everyone more of a bird's eye view. It would be very cumbersome for me to go through the entire thing. However, I do want to just point out a few things. What is on here are achievement goals, the progress and the growth that we are making in those goal areas, how we're improving as a school, the specific programming that we're doing within our buildings for the kids, for the departments, and then overall satisfactions, our surveys that we have sent out and received information from different stakeholder groups. There's also areas for curriculum, gifted and talented, our mentorship program, an area for parent and teacher resources, student resources, staff development, teacher evaluation, and then a very extensive area in testing and assessment. So, you can see, if we clicked on all of those, there is a very large amount of information that talks about our school district. This is a snapshot of our school district. If we, if you ever run across families who are maybe looking at the New Prague area schools, and they ask them, you know, where can I go on the website to find some information about, of course, just our district website, but you may direct them to the Educational Services area and tell them, please go to the World's Best Workforce, and you can find a lot of data that is going to, you know, show exactly where our students are at, all students. Mr. Dipperner, again, did talk about the information that we received today from the Department of Education, wonderful information, and last year's information that we received in the same email is included in this World's Best Workforce. So, it's a very comprehensive plan, and what we did was, we went through and updated all the information, our goals, our progress, our testing information, and we will do that every single year. Anything specifically on the website before I click out of it and go right into the summary? Sorry about that. I thought I had it up. I have about seven to eight pages here, and I'll just scroll through it very carefully. As you can see, again, this is a summary that the Department of Education says that we, as a school district, must provide them. After three years, they're going to take a much, much closer look at every school district to see if you are closing the achievement gap in those areas. The first five things that I did read off to you in that slide are the areas that they are looking at for every school district. That's exactly what it is, that the Department of Education, the criteria that they're looking at to see if we are making strides in those areas.
Is that summary on the website, or is that separate?
The summary is not on the website. It only has to be sent to the Department of Education. I don't see any reason why it couldn't be, though, but it's, again, very, it's, everything on the summary comes directly off the World's Best Workforce. Everything on the summary comes off. So, the first part is just a description of our district in New Prague. We highlight a number of our schools and their academic success, our MMR success, our celebratory and reward schools. We talk about the 13-14 data that shows exactly how our school district is doing as compared to the state. Our district goals for last year. Any supports that we had within our schools for our students. And this is a template that, what I did basically was typed in the answers, but the Department of Education sent out a template that they wanted completed. So, basically, I just put it into Word. It talks a lot about staff or professional development, and it really highlighted the PLC work that all of our school districts have been doing, the response to intervention within all of our buildings, and all the successful things that our school district and our buildings are doing to help students that are struggling. And then our best practice strategies and action steps. What are the things we're doing to help our students very specifically? Current student achievement plans. These are all things that our school works on, like our literacy plan, number two, the very first one, PBIS, within our elementary schools, school readiness, college and career. We have plans in all those areas, and we have action steps that either principals or directors are working on to improve those areas within our district. Indicators of implementation and how we're doing, our progress. And then the last is the broad outcomes. So, how did we do? So, this is kind of the meat and potatoes, a little bit showing the Department of Education how our school district actually did based on the goals that it was that we said we were going to improve in. And again, this is information that Mr. Dipperner, months ago, has already talked about, MMR scores and those types of things. But what I did was, I, there's five different areas, all students in third grade achieving grade-level literacy, very cut and dry right there as to how our kids are doing, both in the NWA and the MCAs. This is all information that is on our website also. Number one, it's on the World's Best Workforce, and the articles that we have written out of the district office, this is, this is information that people have seen before, but it's good information to bring in front of us once again. The scores here reflect all of the achievement gaps and how we're doing on those, and as Mr. Dipperner said, the article that's going to be coming out that will show how it is we're doing in the eyes of the Department of Education will be within those areas, free and reduced lunch, special education, those different areas. And then last but not least are the college and career readiness and graduation rates. So, we have to put those things on there. And really what it is, is we've got two different pieces. We have updated the World's Best Workforce for this school year, and we have written a summary for last school year, sent that into Department of Education to meet our requirements. And I'm here tonight to ask for your action to approve the updates of the World's Best Workforce for 2014-2015.
You've basically just updated your goals for this year based on performance last year, or did you add anything new into what we went over last year?
Well, yeah, all of the, if you were to go on to the World's Best Workforce, it starts with the goals. It starts with the district goals, and then it goes into the building goals. And even, even if our goals, which ours align, the student achievement goals are always ones in the area of special education, limited English proficiency, free and reduced lunch, students of color, that's a responsibility of our districts to improve or close those achievement gaps all of the time. Do we have specific goals within those areas in around about way? Yes, absolutely. Our goals from the district and from the buildings encompass all of those areas. What the World's Best Workforce does is, shows exactly how you completed those and what your progress was. So, the World's Best Workforce truly does reflect what it is your goals are for the school year, and as far as answering your question, did we update those? Yes, we did update those. As far as things that are really, really new, no, not really. It's reading, writing, and arithmetic that we're trying to improve of all students. We kind of hit some of the subgroups a little bit differently. That's where our directors or principals have some of their specific building goals that they're working on.
Have you seen areas of concern through this process, or is everything?
Well, we always want to improve, Jerry, that's for sure.
Right, but...
But as far as our district goes, and maybe Mr. Dipperner can help me with that also, we are moving in a very positive direction in all areas. Some of our subgroups are very small, you know, diversity and those types of things, but there is not one area that we do not have someone, a director, a principal, you know, myself, always looking out for, always setting goals and action steps to improve those goals.
Yeah, and I would say this, like I shared with you this fall, if you look at our school district, we're in the top 10 of all 54 metropolitan area school districts. We're in the top 10 as a school district. All three of our elementaries have received awards. The middle school's a top-five school, or top-five middle school out of 400-some middle schools. So, we're doing very well. When he talks about sub, when Tony talks about subgroups, like he said, there's English learners, there's race, and you've got to have targets met with those subgroups. Now, we don't, how should I say this? You need at least 20 students in every subgroup to count as a target, and we have 20 students of all different races. The only one is American Indian we do not have, but we've met the targets for all of that. And I will say this, as a building, principal, with all our buildings, or overall, we don't, you know, say, you know, point out or look at ethnic... out or, or look at ethnic groups or free and reduced lunch or anything. We're teaching and working with all kids. The byproduct, the result, is if we're doing our job, if we're really identifying what the kids are supposed to be able to know and do, and if we do a good job assessing and giving interventions for all kids or enriching things for all kids, we're going to do very well. And that's what's happened. So it's not like we, we focus on a, a group of kids, you know, whether by race or poverty or, you know, anything like that. It's just that we are closing achievement gap just for what we're doing. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So our goals by building are building goals. It's not by subgroup.
I did poll up here, Tim, and the school board, exactly both the math and the reading of the subgroup areas. And I would, did what Mr. Dittberner says, when we're working with all of our students, we're not singling anybody out. However, I can go back to three or four years ago and I don't have the data here tonight. There were areas that we were not proficient in with some of our subgroups. That has since changed and for two years in a row, now thirteen, what would have been twelve, thirteen and thirteen fourteen, we have been proficient. So if you just take a look on the screen, subject, there are, there's math and you can see student group, there's Hispanic, black, white, LEP, special education, free and reduced lunch. Proficiency is where we are at as a New Prague school district and the proficiency target is where the Department of Education would like us to be. And then the difference is?
Yeah, you can just see the first one with math, Hispanic, the, the difference there. So we're well above. Our kids are doing very well. You know, and I, it's, you know, as long as we're talking about this, we have all this on the website. People do look at the website when they, in fact, I just had a question last Friday. It was a situation that happened last week and I got back to the person today and they thanked me for getting back to them. And that's why I'm not talking, but what they also said, they said, we moved to New Prague after we looked at your website and saw the academic achievement results you're getting. And they said something about the, the video, the high school video that's on there and stuff like that. So people do look at that, but the first thing people look at is where we're at academically. That's the first cut. And I always say the second cut to get the people in is this, that personalized school environment that we have. That's why I say on soup talk, you, you look at Wyatt Skok who moved here from another school district. He talks about the school climate at the high school, how wonderful it is and how inviting, how great a learning experience he's had, what great teachers he's had. But it's academics, but it's more than academics. We have to have a comprehensive education where we're meeting the kids' needs, whether it's socially, emotionally, academically, the whole, the whole works. And, you know, going back to We Day for our kids to, not just We Day, but continually giving back and that service learning component is so important. So it's not just about academics, but we're very proud of the results we're getting. And I think, you know, I can say this as a past parent, just the overall education here is, I think is excellent, but we're continually trying to get better. And to answer your question, Jerry, we're doing well, but we can do better. And our vision is to be a world-class school district.
I'm comfortable approving the updates, but I'd like to see the summary that you have there. And also, if you can do like some kind of a summary of, I know this is like the first year of doing this, but what changed from last year to this year, just, you know, to, to prevent us from going through and reading everything and, you know, just kind of a summary. So we're aware of what our, you know, the important goals are and what's changed.
Absolutely.
And as you can see on the website, all those things, well, he's in charge of all those things. And there's a lot, a lot of work that goes into this. And one of you asked me before the meeting, this is something that, the whole, you know, the strategic plan is part of this, but this is something that, you know, is mandated by the state and there's a lot of things that go into it. And I want to thank Tony for doing a great job coordinating that because it's not easy and he said-
That's a lot of work.
A lot of, and we got to stay on top of it and, and continue to get better.
Sure. And what I can do, Kitten, and for the entire board is I'll put last year's goals and this year's goals really side by side and then show exactly where we scored last year and what we're working on for this year.
That'd be great. Thank you.
It's in there. It would just take a half hour to find it. But it's very important. I mean, that's, that's good feedback. I want to make certain that, that is easy for us to read.
Great.
Does anyone have any other questions on his presentation?
I, I just want to thank you, Tony. That really lays everything out. It's really interesting too, to see that.
Well, it's amazing the detail they want you to go through-
Yeah, it is.
-to do that.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
That's why so many school districts are hiring multiple people to do.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to approve the update?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next we have the non-licensed sub pay rate. Are you going to present that?
Sandy Lynn is at home ill. And basically it's, we did, did our research on our ten comparative school districts and adjusted the pay rates for our nine, non-licensed subs. So I think we're right in the middle. We're very competitive and I know Sandy feels good about this recommendation.
Yeah, and what she explained at the work session seemed very reasonable. So I have, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, we want to make sure we can get the subs when we need them. So you need to pay, pay a fair rate.
So you looking for a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the non-licensed sub pay rates.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next, the most complicated calendar I've ever seen.
Well, we had to get on one page. That was our goal. I'm going to go over it right now. There's two calendar options we're going to take a look at and this is based on, from the survey that was done and then also feedback from staff. And we're going to put this out on the website and continue to get feedback, especially from the directors within their departments and also the principals from each of their buildings. So meeting with staff. And there are two very different options here. The first one that we have up there, and keep in mind, the one thing that's similar in both of them, the big change is that we're starting early because of a roof, roofing construction project. So we're starting August thirty-first on both of the options, both of the calendars. That's Labor Day is late next year at September seventh. So we're starting early on August thirty-first. And you might also notice in October, we're not having conferences. We usually have elementary conferences or we've had all conferences sometimes during that week, but we'll have a three-day school week with Thursday and Friday off. So that's where the biggest change is, but they're both like that. Now, on this calendar that's up there right now, option one, there's a spring break. And if you go down to March, that's Easter Fridays, March twenty-fifth would be off and the whole next week. This is after all winter activities are done. And on this one, the last school day will be June second. Also on there, you can see May thirteenth, on that Friday is a comp day too. Now, you want to go to the This one, the biggest difference, if you want to go to March, we have the Thursday, Friday and Monday around Easter off, similar to this year. Thursday is a makeup day, a third day for bad weather day makeup. Monday, the twenty-eighth is a teacher comp day. So that got moved from May thirteenth to there. As you can see on this one, the biggest thing besides not having a full spring break is that school would be out on May twenty-sixth and the graduation would be on May twenty-eighth on that Saturday. That'd be Memorial Day Saturday. So this one would be getting out a week earlier. And yeah, those are the, the biggest changes. It's just a spring break or whether they have a, you know, a three days off around that weekend or taking a full week and then getting done May twenty-sixth or June second. Any questions?
So you're going to put this out for comment by teachers and parents?
Yep.
And how will they make comments?
I think, well, I think we're going to do, I know we did a monkey survey, but I think we might go through the portal system this time and, and have them, have both of the calendars out on the website and then get their feedback that way. So it's more, a little bit more specific so they can look at it.
Do many schools have graduation on Memorial Day weekend?
Um, not much in Minnesota. I know in other states and Iowa, quite a few have it on either Saturday or Sunday on Memorial Day. It's a, for, I know parents like it for a couple of reasons, for travel, for family, having on Saturday. The other thing, it opens up Sunday for open houses, knowing you don't have anything on Monday, you know, except some Veterans Day things to go to. But yeah, it's something, I think we'll take a, we'll get some specific feedback. I mean, so it narrows it down when you have two options.
When we do maintenance, can we automatically start before Labor Day or do we have to get approval from the state first as far as starting before Labor Day?
You just, if you have a project of four hundred thousand dollars or over, like we have this, you just inform them. And then they, they sent a letter back to me a couple weeks ago, just acknowledging that they got my letter.
Okay.
And when do you hope to make a decision on the calendar?
I'd like to bring this to you for approval at the December meeting. And, you know, if there's some problems, if there's some problems with that, I mean, I could, we can always go January, but the sooner the better.
So you're looking for a month's worth of feedback before that?
Yeah, I think that's, should be able to get that done.
Sure. That's good.
And I'm, and personally, as, I'm fine with both of them. I mean, there's pros and cons to each of them. The first one concerning is, well, I put together the second one was we're basically, you know, with the spring break and two weekends, we're off ten days before testing starts. That would be the con to that one. Obviously, the con to the other one is, you know, there is no spring break. I mean, you do have three days off around Easter. And that also, the second one, notice we've got more days, bad weather days built into that calendar too.
Do the teachers have a preference?
Well, I haven't talked to many teachers. I've shown it to a couple of groups of teachers and, well, just off the start, the ending early was very popular, but it's, got to be careful of that because you end early, but then again, come April, then they're, they're concerning that there's no spring break too. I mean, can't have both. So there's, like I said, it'll be interesting, the feedback we get.
Sophie?
The one with spring break ends earlier than, because we're starting earlier, earlier than other school districts.
Most school districts that I've seen so far in calendars are getting out June ninth. So I'm just telling you, even if we got out June second, it would be earlier than most school districts and May twenty-sixth would be two weeks before some school districts too.
If we had to do any makeup days, would that change the graduation date?
No, graduation would stay. Yeah, we could always go on that Friday, obviously. And the second-
One of those colors on there is-
Yeah, the May twenty-sixth, the May twenty-sixth date, we've got makeup days-
Okay, that's great.
While we have one on March twenty-fourth. I was able to get one there. The other, the other one, it'd have to be near the end of the year. But I'm sure we'll have really good weather in the-
Yeah, that's another thing too. Anything else on the calendar? Move on to a resolution for a donation from New Prague Area Boys and Girls Basketball Association to Falcon Ridge Elementary.
We actually have two resolutions also. There's one gift from Gopher Athletic to the Raven Stream School, I believe, yes, to Raven Stream School. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the first resolution, which is New Prague Area Girls and Boys Traveling Basketball Associations.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
They're moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. And actually, I'll read the boilerplate information which will apply for both of them and just change the part where it talks about the exact resolution. Whereas New Prague Area Schools Board of Education has established a policy concerning acceptance of gifts to the school district. And whereas the policy states that the school board may receive for benefit of the school district bequest donations, grants of gifts for any proper purpose. And the school board shall have the sole authority to determine whether any gift with a value of one thousand dollars or more, or any precondition, condition or limitation on use included in a proposed gift with a value of one thousand dollars or more, further is the interest or benefits the school district than whether it should be accepted or rejected. Whereas the school board may accept the gift valued at one thousand dollars or more only by adoption of a resolution by two-thirds of its members. Whereas the New Prague Area Girls and Boys Traveling Basketball Associations wishes to donate three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for new backboards and hoops at Falcon Ridge Elementary School. How do you vote on that, Donald?
I have a question for Mr. Dittberner. I don't remember too often where we have donations to one school.
Yeah, it's the school, elementary is Falcon Ridge. And the reason why we have it to one school is that they've got, it's the oldest gym and they have, let's just say, the quality of baskets are not in line with the other schools that we have. So the association wanted new baskets. We didn't have it in the budget. And they want to, they want to start using Falcon Ridge more. They're short on gym space. And so they're willing, along with Gopher, to donate those baskets.
It's a nice donation.
Yeah, it's, instead of fan-shaped metal backboards, the old fan-shaped metal, it's glass rectangular. So they just wanted obviously better, better baskets. And that is our oldest facility. I'll go back to the, the facilities task force is, we'll be talking more specifically, but besides the CDC, Falcon Ridge is the one that's going to, we're going to have more deferred maintenance needs. And I'd rather take donations for this instead of spending some of our budget on things that need to get fixed, especially with HVAC items rather than, you know, these are, these are, this is a want I'd consider. It's a nice thing to have and very appreciative of associations to do this for us. But yeah, to answer your question, Don, they're just, it's, it's old equipment.
Okay. I vote yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes. The next resolution comes from Gopher Athletic and the same information about the stipulations. Whereas Gopher Athletic wishes to donate sixty FIT step pro pedometers, two scanners, a push-up and sit-up counter, a couple of exercise bands, a couple dumbbells, a couple kettlebells and medicine ball to Raven Stream Elementary School without any prescribed conditions. I'll take a motion to consider that resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. How do you vote on that, Sherry?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Donald?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes. And again, Don, that kind of goes along the same line as the question that you had before. It is to a school.
No, I was just pointing out that either donations have been for the whole school system or, or the high school. Not specific.
Yep.
Not that there's anything wrong.
Oh, okay. I understand what he means. Yep.
Item passes.
Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.